I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council for May 22. Can we please have a roll call?
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Van Der Heid.
Here.
Councilmember John Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Present.
Councilmember Vince Helming.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Kebrik.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Kirsten Keneese, present. In order to have a quorum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority, therefore there is a quorum for this meeting.
Would you please take a moment for personal reflection? Thank you, and if you would, stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Minutes were sent out, are there any additions or corrections?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Vince. Any further discussion? All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
I guess I should ask any opposed, but, okay. I'd like to take a minute just to introduce you to our next General Manager of Utilities, City Utilities. As you know, we received Bud's resignation letter, effective at the end of June, and so we started doing the search several months ago, advertised for it, and brought it down to just a few. And really am happy with where we've landed with this appointment. Rob, if you would, come up. Rob Young is a gentleman I've selected to follow in Bud's footsteps in Jasper City Utilities. I think he's going to do a great job in leading us into the future. Rob comes with a background, he's got an MBA from Ball State, background in business, has proven himself over and over again in continuous improvement and innovation, doing things more effectively, and so I'd like to introduce to you, Rob Young. Okay, Rob, you want to say a few words about yourself?
Sure. The lengthy prepared speech was with the utility service board meeting Monday, but I appreciate the opportunity, excited to be here, excited to get started. I've long thought that a role like this within the community might be a fulfilling one, and so I'm excited to get engaged and prove that out. If you don't know me, I've been pretty involved, especially in like youth activities over the years, came back to the area in the early 2000s, had been involved with junior football and baseball and junior achievement, everything in between. My wife Dana and I, former Dana Shirley, may know her dad better than me, have been very involved in the community over the years, just volunteering and staying engaged. We've got three sons that we've raised in the community, Grant, who's now at IU, Ethan, who's a high school baseball player that's playing here in a couple of minutes, and then an eighth grader, Tanner, that's graduating eighth grade tonight. So, I would just say that to say this, we're very invested in the community, the success of the community, both now and into the future. Hopefully it can add some ideas, some new perspective, and some ideas to the role, and I look forward to working with everyone in the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, and I know you want to get to the game, so I told him, I told him we'd get him first on the agenda and introduce him.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys having me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, Jeff, we have you as a department presentation tonight.
Good evening, everyone, or afternoon. When I put my glasses on, the guys that work always say Jeff's going to get serious, and it's not true, it just means he really wants to read, so. Getting to that age where I have to have them. So anyhow, I know when I ask, I always ask myself, what is it that they want to hear when I make this presentation to everyone, and when I ask others about it, they all say keep it short. So if anybody's been to any of the Board of Public Works meetings, you know that I always keep it short, at least. So I'll strive to continue to do that, okay? Again, I see this more as an opportunity for you to ask questions about what's going on at the Street Department, but again, I'll kind of give you an overview, try to do it quickly so we can move on, I know you've got other business to take care of, and the people behind me would appreciate that as well. So, I know we sent out the list of pavement and preservation projects for the year, and anyhow, you'll notice that that number always seems to be going down more and more. It's a downward trend, I think in 2019, we paved like 5.8 miles of streets, and last year, in 2023, we paved three, almost three and a quarter miles only. So, again, there's a couple of reasons for that one, is that, you know, we're spending some of our budget downtown, and again, it's a big area, but it's not lengthy, so you don't add a whole lot of miles on that project, or those projects, so that number doesn't really, you know, go up. The other is, is that, you know, the cost of asphalt, in 2019, we were paying $71 a ton for surface asphalt. Last year, we paid $97 a ton, so that went up 37%, and that, you know, that's about 9% a year. So again, I'm guessing that's keeping with inflation, but again, that's chewing up more and more of our dollars. The budget stays the same number, but it's actually going down because the cost is going up. So anyhow, those are a couple of the factors of why that's happening, so, again, this year and this year's budget, we've got two community crossing projects, one for like $487,000, the other one for $340,000, and again, that's, you know, that's great money because, you know, indots matching that, and that helps. So again, you know, we've got another round coming up here in the fall, for the fall call, but the truth of the matter is, is if you looked at the budget, there's not any money to be used for that, so, again, we probably won't be putting anything in because we just, I don't know where I'd find it, the budget's at its maximum right now, so just to kind of give you an update on that. Like I said, we've got a couple of community crossing projects, those are great, they help us a bunch, so. We've already started on what we're calling 2023-2, which is the second call in 2023, we're doing eight streets, and matter of fact, Friday, they milled Baden Strasse, and Monday and Tuesday, they put surface back on it, it did get completed yesterday, so that's got new surface on it, so one of eight has already been done, and looking forward to getting the rest of them. We did get awarded the early call for 2024, 2024-1, and that's three different streets, those are a little bit bigger projects because we're, again, we're going to replace some sidewalks, and curbs, and some storm sewers in those, so these were ones that were kind of really needing sidewalks really bad, and the asphalt needed to be replaced as well, and the storm sewers were in a position where they needed to be replaced, so.
Where were those, Jeff?
What were those? There's three of them, the first one is West 14th Street from Newton to Kundak, and probably one of the worst sidewalks in the city. The next one is West 14th Street from Laurel to Altmeier, that one doesn't have a storm sewer, it doesn't have sidewalks, but the curbs are shifted every which direction, so there was no real good drainage there, and that was killing the edges of the street. The interesting thing about it is, it's in the asphalt world, you call that number nine surface over there, we have no idea when it was last paved, but it is, it is as tough as, I mean, we've paved streets twice that we know about, and these, this one here, we don't have a clue when it was done, but it's, it was back when they put asphalt in it, is what I always say, it just, it was tough, it's just, it's a shame to mill that street off, but it's time, it's losing its fines and it's got cracks, so. And then the other one is E16, or E6 Street from Jackson to Mill, again, kind of a continuation of downtown, again, sidewalks in that area, or at least on the south side, or in really bad shape, and so, and there are some storm sewers in there that are in bad shape as well, so, again, kind of a continuation downtown, making Sixth Street a little better all the way to the police station there, and the fire station, so. Just real quick, over the winter was pretty mild winter, we actually, we only went out, we were on call four times because of the forecast, but we only went out twice, and we only sprayed once, it was actually two days we sprayed though anticipation of a snowstorm, but anyhow, we've taken delivery on about 150 tons, we actually ordered 600 tons, I was, keep thinking that one of these winters, we're going to get one, and I was guessing this was going to be it, and I was guessed wrong. So, we've got to take before July 1st, another 450 tons, so, which leads me into my next thing, which is our dirt storage building that we've built down at the Street Department. If you've been down there, you've seen it, it's behind our salt barn, and really nice barn, we're going to keep our topsoil in there and keep it dry, the problem is, is that every time we were scheduling some yard work, with the topsoil being outside, it would rain a day or two before, and then we'd have nothing but mud, so trying to find some good stuff. This will keep it dry, and we'll be able to keep a closer eye on it too, to see, you know, who's using it and where it's going, other departments do use it as well. Currently, we're using it, we're storing it in two bins out at the old power plant where those coal bins are, and so that's, the good news is, is that we've poured the floor in there, that's ready, here at the end of this month, we're going to start hauling that dirt out of there, bringing it into our building, that will open up those two bins down there, which each one holds about 225 tons, and it's a miracle I'll be able to store 450 tons, so, so I guess, I guess I got lucky on that one. So anyhow, so we've completed that earlier this month, so that's done. Dogs, it's been another year for dogs, and we're not near over, we've picked up 32 dogs so far this year, eight this month alone, and that averages about seven a month. We had seven of them that were never claimed, they were turned over to the DuBois County Humane Society after holding them for three days, 16 were a first offense, four were a second offense, and two were a third offense, so, anyhow, continues to be a problem, even repeat a problem sometimes, so, anyhow, we're continuing to do pavement preservation.
Explain what you meant about those offenses with the dogs.
I'm sorry?
Explain what you meant about first, second, and third offense with those dogs.
Actually, that means, that's how many times we've picked that dog up.
Oh.
Okay, so a lot of them were the first.
But no tags, so you don't know who it belongs to?
Well, like I said, on seven of them, we never, they weren't tagged, they didn't have chip in them, so, and nobody ever came forward in those three days of hold, so we turned them over to the Humane Society, and they re-adopted, but like 16 of them were the first offense, so it was the first time we've ever collected that dog. We did find the owner for that one, for those 16, and then the four second offense, we found the owners for those as well, and then a third offense, it happened twice, where we picked that dog up three times over the life of that dog, so. Sometimes we do keep records of them, pictures of them, sometimes if we catch them, it looks familiar, which sometimes I always say they all look alike to me, we can go back into that log and find out who they were and call them, and speeds up this process a little bit, but, but yeah, so, alrighty. Liquid Road, we're going to start that project in June, and then rejuvenator and microsurface preservations, we'll start those in August or September, it probably will be September, so. Equipment, we're hoping to take delivery on a new cardboard recycling truck this month, working on specifications and bids, we're keeping the legal department very busy, and thank you to them for that, but we're looking to take, to purchase a new, it's called a Midi excavator, a little bit bigger than a Mini, and anyhow, we're planning on transferring, we were going to sell our trade-in, one of the backhoes that we have, parking rec is in need of a newer one, and so whatever the vendor gives us on a trade-in, as long as parking rec will pay us that, we'll transfer that to them, so they'll have a nicer backhoe than the one they currently have. We're taking also waiting, getting ready for bids for a telehandler, an air compressor for the crack seal operation, a new crack seal machine, and a two and a half ton truck with snowplow, and a one ton with a salt spreader and snowplow as well, so those are coming up. We have two other items in the budget as well, however, right now, the way inflation and pricing is going, I am scared where we are, so we're holding off on a tractor with a boom mower and a three-wing pull behind mower, we're going to wait a little bit later in the year here to see where we're at on this budget, so. So anyhow, I am happy to report, however, we had all kinds of trouble trying to get a new curbside recycling truck, trying to find a chassis has been a challenge, we've ordered it, it got canceled, we tried to find another one, and luckily, we managed to find one, and I'm happy to report that that truck, the chassis, has been built, it's right now, it's got a stand-up cab on it, which is unique, a company called Fontaine makes those, and so right now, that chassis is at Fontaine, they're putting that cab body on it as we speak, so, after that's done, it'll go to a can manufacturing, which puts the recycling body on it, so the good news is, it looks like it's on schedule, we should have that later this year, so. That is, as you might remember, we actually did get a $100,000 grant to borrow that truck, so, from IDIM, so we're looking forward to that. It will expand our recycling, in which we'll have a bin on there that we can now add colored glass to, so we'll start collecting not only clear glass, but colored glass, but again, I don't want to advertise that just real big just yet, because we're not ready for that yet, and it'll take the new truck before we can do it, because we don't have a bin on there that we can put that in, so, alright. As I said, just a few other things, January, we started construction on the dirt shed, already talked about that, but a big thank you to Jasper Electric for giving us their auger truck to drill the holes into our facility to put the poles in, and DuBois REC also lent us their bigger auger, so that we had bigger holes that we could use. During January, we, on cold days, we've been running extra collection trucks, just to keep the employees out of the cold, and if it's 25 and a wind chill is there, we try to do that, anyhow, some people are used to us maybe picking up in the afternoon, and we kind of mess their schedule up, but anyhow, we always say that it's important to keep your, get your trash out there by 7 o'clock, because we never know when we're going to really be there, especially on days like that, so. We've been using our new side truck, which is a bucket truck, we've been using it to trim some trees, and it's working really well, so again, it was a great investment, not only is it a side truck, but it helps us trim trees back as well. During January, we patrolled all the alleys in the city, we go through, we clean them up, there's debris there that needs to be cleaned up, we do that, if there's maintenance to the alley, whether it needs rock or anything, we do that, and did some culvert cleaning, go around and check all the culverts that we know of, make sure that they're open, and so it's one time that we're, we can really hit them and get them clean, dress them up looking nice, but February was such a mild month that we were actually able to do some storm sewer work, dipped 40 feet out on Crestwood Drive, like I said, it was really mild. Unfortunately, January, February, and March are crack sealing months for pavement preservation, and as luck would have it, the machine broke down in February, and we could not get the parts, and not until March did we manage to get that unit back up and running again, so that was pretty aggravating. And then, I know up in the 1500 block of Mill Street, you've probably seen us working up there a bunch, there was a, a lot of storm sewer was broken, we've replaced that, but one of the things that's interesting about that up there is that, when it rained really hard in that area, there was a manhole lid near 16th Street that would pop off, because there was so much pressure in that line, and we never understood why it was doing that, everything seemed to be sized right, and anyhow, after further investigation, we found out that there was a gas line ran through that storm sewer, and so what we thought was an 18-inch actually was smaller than that, because the gas line was taking up capacity of that 18-inch pipe. So, we worked with the gas department, they removed that pipe, and ran it underneath, and we put a new pipe in, and it looks like that problem has been solved. Anyhow, we'll see here, with the spring rains, whether or not that happens again, but we're so confident it's not, we actually eliminated that manhole, and so it shouldn't, should not be a problem, so. Our employees in February attended the 811 training at Huntingburg, educating on pipeline safety, continued training our employees with our internal trainer for CDL license, a CDL, and Alan Heemer does that for us, he does an excellent job, just a very patient guy, and he sometimes laughs when, after a guy passes, he sometimes tells me, I wasn't too sure about that one, but he's patient, and he does a great job training guys, so, anyhow. Anyhow, we did help out with the city parking lot with the maintenance department here at City Hall, removed some sod and put some landscaping rock in, so maintained that a little bit better, and replaced, over at Sixth and Mill, there was a water line break there, and it blew up that ADA ramp completely, it washed out underneath there, so when they were done with their repair, we came in, tore it all out, and put a new ADA ramp in there, so got that fixed, and then, let's see, near the end here. We did send our sweeper operators, mechanics, to a sweeper training up in Indianapolis, put on by Global, and it was very educational, they learned all kinds of things that they did not know, learned a few tricks about sweeping streets, and mechanics learned some things about putting on equipment onto it, the brooms and whatnot, so, it was well worth our time, so. Dewey Street project, I know that was a community crossings project, however, where the upper 14th to 15th, where I call it an S curve there, the alley goes on to the north, there was kind of a drainage problem in there, and the storm sewer was in bad shape, so unfortunately, in the community crossings project, you can't have alleys in those projects, they don't allow that, so we went ahead and had them tap out of, tap out of one of the boxes in the street, we caught it, and then ran it up the alley, improved a inlet box in there, so drainage is a lot better, one yard is real low, we managed to pick a seepage tile to it, and so it's really turned out really well. Long term, we'd like to pave that alley at some point, not so much because there's any traffic on it, there aren't actually any driveways there, but if we invert it, it'll make for a better drainage of that entire neighborhood, and it'll bring it down to our storm inlet and get it away from all the yards, so that's long term, we don't have that in plan just yet, but it's on the radar for possibly next year, and and then in April, electric department again assisted us with some trees that were in the rideaway that had died, we replaced, took down about three of those, three or four, actually. On the eclipse day, we ran double collection again to get our crews off the streets before the afternoon, and it went well. Oiling crews continued to, in April, they started spraying and mowing the indot rideaways, and we've already done one weed abatement so far this year, but that's, that's pretty much it that I've got. Anybody have any questions, that's probably the bigger thing.
Jeff, what about the walking path, Northwood, what's the plan there? What timeline on?
I, you really have to check with engineering, but I can find out and let you know where we're at on that, I know that we're close to going to build on it, so.
I think we've gotten, we've definitely sent the contract out, is it, it's not back yet.
Okay.
But it should be soon.
We're soon, okay. Okay, but yeah, it should be soon, so, alright.
Jeff, I appreciate you sending out these paving and preservation projects, and also I think we learned at one of the department head meetings, that one of the local contractors also read this, and they speeded up a project so that they didn't have to dig up a street you were paving.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, so that communication's excellent, and also how your department works so well with the other departments.
So, yeah, I mean, we're all in this together, so, but I think, I think all our departments do a great job of working together, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
Probably salted up now for the coming winter.
We are, after this delivery by, before the July, we'll have 1,800 tons, so I think, if we get a big one, we're ready.
Have we called any neighboring towns to make sure they also hit the vets and make sure that...
Hey, Jeff. There you go, that's right.
Or we could start supplying to others.
Yeah, exactly, so yeah, if somebody caught wind that we had placed to store some, I'm sure I'd be getting a phone call, because I'm sure there are others that are in the same position we are, so. Unfortunately, you have to, and you have to predict in March, what you're going to take for that next winter, and it's just tough to do, so this year, it's no big shock, just to stay in the program, we told them we'd take 100 ton, and I'm sure we can use 100 ton in a winter, so, but, so.
Jeff, thanks for the update.
Okay, alright, sorry I ran long, but anyhow, alright, okay.
Next on the agenda is the Heart of Jasper presentation.
Good evening, Kate Schwenk with Heart of Jasper, and Ruger's here with me as well, and appreciate you guys allowing us to have some of your time, so, you can go into the next slide if you want. Ruger and I are here tonight to really share with you some conceptual designs we have on a project that we've been working on for the past eight or nine months, tonight strictly informational, we're not seeking any sort of approval this evening, really wanted to share with you the designs that we have, and our next steps of what we want to go through this process, and wanted to let this group here at first, so you know what we're going to be sharing with some of the other boards within the city. So, as you can see on the screen there, we've already spoke with the RDC, we received funding from them from our downtown activation funds to get these designs created, and so, really appreciated their support there. After this meeting...
Kate, just for our knowledge, how much did the RDC provide in financial support?
$37,000.
Okay.
It was actually part of their $50,000 that it should use.
Yeah, it's the part of the downtown activation funds that we receive from the RDC were allowed to be used for these designs. So after this meeting, the Board of Public Works, we'll speak to them, Board of Zoning Appeals, and then come back to City Council more for a final approval when we're ready for that, so again, tonight's just informational, and so we'll get into the designs, but we need to go to the Board of Public Works for seeking approval to use the city's parking lot at Fourth and Main, and then we'd be going to the Board of Zoning Appeals, seeking a special exception to allow for a park or this courtyard in the business district, and so, it seems probably like we're coming to you early, but without knowing we can move forward with this project, we can't begin to build a fundraising campaign or applying for grants, which we've identified several placemaking grants that are available, but we don't want to apply for them and put the time and effort into them if we don't have permission to move forward with this project, so, that's why we're here to share this, sharing with you the timeline that we have, and letting you know kind of what our plans are, so, you can go to the next one. So the courtyard and the trail, and really kind of where this started, when I first started at Heart of Jasper, it was mentioned, you know, how do we really connect the downtown square to the Tin Clark Cultural Center, and if you recall, the crosswalk murals on Fourth Street, that was our lighter, quicker, cheaper way to start building this trail, so if you go out of the library, you walk down the brick sidewalk, you cross the crosswalk murals, and those lead you to Main Street, and so again, that was a kind of simple way to start thinking of how do we connect these two areas together, and so this idea resurfaced back in the fall, and Josh reminded us of the Impact Jasper Plan, so it was identified in this plan back in 2019, to really connect the cultural center to the downtown, and so that kind of got our wheels spinning a little bit, and right in the center of those two hubs that are now both completed, is the city's parking lot at Fourth and Main, and so, you can go to the next slide. And so kind of why now, you know, why are we, why are we really pushing for the project now? Well, the connectivity, we feel is valuable, to have that continuity between the downtown square, now that it's newly renovated, to the cultural center and all the traffic that it's bringing down, down there with community arts and the library. Public restrooms have been identified need in the downtown, and so that parking lot is a proposed location, potentially, for the, for public restrooms, and then with the South Main project being hopefully underway soon, so with those different, with the South Main project, and potentially restrooms going in that, in that city parking lot, we started coming up with this idea of this courtyard being built in that city parking lot, which we'll have Ruger go through the designs and kind of show you what we mean by a courtyard, and what we'd like to have in that space.
Thank you, Kate. Here is a perspective rendering, just showing kind of the full design from Main Street on the far left of the picture here, all the way to the right, ending at the Riverwalk, so that is the future of the entire project, so I wanted to lead in to why the location is so important, because you can see with that trail that was identified in the redeveloped downtown Jasper Plan, it identified Fourth Street, and this is the overhaul on Fourth and a piece of the conceptual renderings that we got back from the architect, but you'll see in the left side where it says Heart of Jasper Courtyard, that's where we're going to be focusing on today, but we wanted to show this illustration to show why that location on corner of Fourth and Main was very important, because it's really going to be right down in the middle of these projects if they're all completed. So here you'll see an aerial view of the proposed courtyard, we've went back and forth with many different designs. back and forth, uh, with many different designs, um, and found this one to be the most functional and also blends with the, uh, design and the conceptual, or, or the curb appeal that was on the square. So you'll see the bench swings with the canopy. Those are similar, similar materials what was used on the square. Um, the, uh, the seating and the chairs, everything, those match what's on the square. Again, we're trying to make this all a seamless look to where whenever all of this is done, it's going to be, uh, look like one big, um, downtown, connected downtown. That's the goal. So on the left side, this entire area is public. Um, while it does butt up to a current restaurant there, this is, uh, one hundred percent open for public use. Um, there it has, uh, the canopies above the seated area and, uh, an awesome part on there is the LED TV shown on the public restroom to utilize that structure. Um, good way to add an amenity to the area, um, is that LED TV for, to enjoy, uh, games, movies, uh, presentations by groups that would prospectively rent the space out. Um, but, and then on the, uh, far top right, you'll see the, uh, handicap accessible entry there. So you'll see steps on the, uh, bottom left and then the handicap accessible entry point on the top right. And I got a couple of views here of different angles. Uh, you're looking at it standing on Main Street, uh, facing east, looking at the courtyard here. Inside the courtyard, that's artificial turf, uh, not grass. There's the handicap ramp. Any questions on the illustrations?
Canopy over top of the swings, is that, is that drawing there? Is that, uh, is that channel all the way or it looks like it would go in? It looks more slotted.
It's not so much for deflecting rain. It's more so for shade.
For shade.
Yeah.
And what we have in place on the LED television set?
Pardon?
The orientation of the television to be, would not land itself very well. It's a sunset of an evening.
We were assured that it's a glare-free TV because that was the first question I asked whenever I saw it placed on that wall. And, uh, Pete was very confident that it would still show a perfect picture with the sun.
I'd have to see one in use to have that proved.
I agree. But that was the first question we asked was, okay, well, sunsets in the west, it's not going to be a good spot. And he assured us many times that, uh, the TV that he had specked out would be perfectly fine. But to your point, I would like to see an example as well. So the considerations, uh, that we took into, uh, while going through this project, um, the big and obvious one, um, is the parking impact, uh, the ownership of the courtyard. So the ownership of the courtyard will revert to, it'll be a city-owned property reverting to the Parks Department as the plan currently lays now. And then the maintenance plan for whoever, you know, the Parks Department, hopefully being the future owner of the project. Um, and with that, the, uh, maintenance of it cost is a big thing, I think, that everybody's probably wondering right now. Um, along with the project being, um, the majority of it being privately fundraised, um, the maintenance plan and ongoing maintenance is also going to be privately fundraised and done through an endowment. Um, that'll be through this project. So, um, it's almost all privately funded. Um, that's the, I think the main thing that I want to get across, uh, today.
The maintenance would have an endowment, you said?
Yes.
Ruger, you have a parking impact listed. Obviously it's number one there. And, um, along the RDC and obviously we voted for it. I think, I think it's a great thing. I think it's a great connector with the application down to the River Walk. And so how do I address questions? And I've got several different questions with parking, like, what are the parking issues? And how, how many parking spaces are we using? And how would you address that?
So there's ten parking spaces that will be lost. And I can't say that we will be regaining them anywhere. But I will say that Fourth Street, shown here, even with the potential improvements in the future, we made sure that it was a two-way street with parking on both sides. So there's still going to be plenty of accessible parking, uh, near the site.
So it's not going to impact any of the parking on Fourth Street?
No.
My, my,
But, but if Fourth Street plays out the way Main Street has, there will be parking spaces lost because we're losing parking spaces up and down Main Street as we did around the square and the side streets. So to say that we would not lose any on Fourth Street, I don't think you could guarantee that.
I think you just mean that there would be parking on both sides.
Yeah.
Two-way traffic on Fourth Street would remain the same.
The architect's comment was there'd be, he didn't, yeah. He said very minimal. Yeah.
Well, that, that parking concern, we have a very successful restaurant there. And when I drive by there at noon or anytime early evening, Friday, Saturday night, they are parked all the, I mean, it is every, everything's full, basically. And I, I, I know, we had an alternative to replace those ten parking spaces. If we can get some other property or do something down there because even the square now is, uh, it's a lot more traffic down here, which is great. We want them, we want everybody to be successful. So, but if people can't find a place to park, they, they probably won't go. And I think that, that could adversely affect his restaurant. If, if there isn't,
Or, or any restaurant that would be there.
I think the, that's where, we understand the importance of our parking count downtown and it was weighed heavily where you have to, everything with progress comes with some type of trade-off and weighing the pros and the cons out. And in my head, you know, when thinking about this project, it's, how, how many people are we deterring from coming downtown and shopping by not having public bathrooms? How many families are not going shopping because they don't have a place to take their, you know, their infants or their kids to go? Because you get turned down whenever you go to merchants and there's no place to go to the bathroom and the courthouse locks their doors. So that, that's, that's one of the main things is the opportunity cost and the trade-off, um, is, you know,
There, there could be another place for restaurants. We got a parking lot right out here and you could put restaurants on the corner there that would take care of the, the downtown area, I think.
You could. We just identified that place because it's really more in the hub of the activity with the library and the cultural center and the traffic that direction. It's more centrally located for what's happening down in that old Jasper area and the river center. So, sorry.
No, you're fine. I've, I've had several conversations with constituents here in the area lately. Restrooms absolutely is one of them. And one of the gentlemen that I had a conversation with spends a lot of time down here on the square in there is in his early eighties. And he said, I, I can't make it, I can't walk two blocks to hit a public restroom. From, if I'm on the square, I need something closer to the square. That's too far for me to, I won't make it, uh, in and out. And that's fine. One of the other comments that we had was, and I heard, I've heard you say it a couple of times now, that Fourth Street maintaining it is in bidirectional with parking on there. What if Fourth Street and Fifth Street became one ways, opposite directions of each other? So you travel down one and we put angle parking in, uh, because there was a ton of concern about losing those ten spaces as well, both from the restaurateur, uh, that's, that's currently in the, in the spot, uh, in there. And two or three other people from that, that businesses that I spoke with, oh, we're going to lose this parking, uh, in there. And will people continue to drive to that facility? Creates a habit, you know, we all like to park close when it's a restaurant, even though we might walk that far to go to a, to a box store or shopping hub in there, not think twice about it. But if it's going out to eat, we don't want, we can't walk two blocks. I mean, so just, just thoughts again, is if Fourth Street went towards the library, Fifth Street came back or whatever it might be, could we do angle parking along one side and gain a ton of space?
That's really not such a bad thought. And that's not been brought up. I often thought that when the library was up where it was, that some of that should have been one way around that library. It would have been easier to get around. So that is something. And I'll chime in about the bathrooms also. I think this is just way too far away from, you know, we're encouraging the Dora, we're encouraging people to sit around the, the four quadrants, but yet we have no place to go to the bathroom there. So I, I would hope that we would look at a closer place to the square for some sort of restroom, restroom facilities.
Not needed along that trail. And I'm, I'm fine with that. Again, we don't take a whole parking lot and we can do that. If we could do something else with traffic, but we do need to address restrooms closer to the, closer to the actual square as well.
Do you envision some of the, uh, participants that would use this would park at the, uh, Library Cultural Center and walk?
Yeah, I think with the future plan, if that all went through, then yes. I mean, then you start seeing parking all the way down Fourth Street towards the River Walk. You have the cultural center parking lot where that could be used. I mean, it seems far now, but I think when it all ties together and sidewalks are done, roads are done, then yes, there would be parking all along Fourth Street.
There will be things to do, so to speak, all along Fourth Street all the way down. So it's not like you have to park on one end or another. It, it doesn't address the, the restroom issue, but it, it may help. If, if we had enough closer to the Library Cultural Center for people to say, you know what, I'm going to park there and that way I can go both directions and utilize it. I, I love the idea of, you know, the connectivity between, uh, you know, the Main Street and the, the River Walk. But I, I do have concerns about the parking area that was available. What, what's been the mood of, and I've been a little out of touch with, with, uh, merchants, but, uh, how supportive of the merchants been knowing that we're eliminating, uh, some parking far down? Have they commented anything on that or?
They've not really commented because I don't think people park at the, that parking lot and walk up to the square to shop. I mean, they're not parking down that far to walk up to the square anyway. So it's really more of the restaurant parking that's being used there.
You kind of envision the, the Fourth Street to be the area that works. I'm not going to drive and park right in front of the restaurant to utilize that area. I might, I might park down the River Walk or place it to the River Walk and go both ways.
Yeah.
I think as, as we move forward though, excuse me, we've, we've got to address the parking as part of this issue. I mean, it, it may be separate from what you're thinking and looking at, but it, but either we have to get involved, maybe like Paul's idea of one-way on Fourth Street and angle parking to pick up the parking spaces so that all of a sudden, we, we do have, here's another concern. If people do utilize that, which we hope they do, they're going to take up parking spaces that are right around there. But you've got a restaurant right there that is having a little bit of trouble now parking people because he's busy, very busy, especially Fridays and Saturday nights is probably his biggest time.
Sure. When the other stores are closed then.
In theory though, they're
There's no parking and stores are closed and city halls closed at, at that time.
And we know how successful business changes parking. Ruger, your, your business down there, or your wife, I should say.
Yeah.
That's changed that whole area. I mean, there's, there's people, parking is filled up the parking lot and that, which is all great.
In a great way.
Again, the trade, the trade-off is, would you rather have an amenity, the, this is not an argument, just I guess a, a point. An amenity that's going to draw people that are willing to spend money in your shops, is that trade-off better than having ten parking spaces that could be absorbed into the side streets and on Fourth Street? I think that's the biggest, uh,
But something Kate just said kind of counteracts that. She said people are not parking in that parking lot to go shop in the downtown stores.
But if people are down there using the courtyard.
We're talking about two different groups of people, I believe.
Yeah. But if people are down there in that space and they walk up to the square as they're hanging out in that area, you know, they're going to be shopping, not just parking their car, eating, getting in their car and leaving.
I was just in Salem this afternoon, um, for a kind of a Main Street type of a program. And they're actually looking at tearing down a building to make parking available, to make more parking for their downtown. And we're looking at closing a parking lot to eliminate parking. It just didn't make sense. I, I liked their idea better of coming up with more parking. So, um, I don't know. The other space that I think would be, could be appropriate for this courtyard is across the street in the lawn part of the Huffman and Mullen, um, property there. I don't know if they'd want to sell it or do anything with it. But to me, it wouldn't take up any parking. It's a grassy area. It's right there where this is, it would flow. So I, again, I'm just throwing that out there as another possibility.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we kind of bring this discussion to an end because we're not going to solve it here. I think, I think the issues that you're hearing are, are solid issues that we've got to address. We've got to be able to respond to. And, um, you know, I appreciate that feedback, but they, they didn't ask us to make any decisions tonight. Just kind of informative. So this is good feedback. And, uh, I appreciate that.
We just need to work together.
Yep. Yep. Anything else, Kate?
No, just again, wanted to share it with you and kind of what our next steps would be if we move forward and we'll keep everybody in the loop. So, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you being forward and, and sharing it. Okay. Um, next is Whitney Lubers with, uh, Downtown Social District. I'm sorry?
DC Multi-Sport.
Okay.
It should see. Uh, it doesn't see.
But, okay.
Hello, everyone. Um, I am coming here today to talk about the Heartland Half Marathon 5K Team Challenge and Kids Fun Run. So it's coming back to Jasper this year. Uh, we did a, uh, we finished our three, uh, city circuit, uh, last year in Ferdinand, and now we're going to do it again. So, um, this next year it will be in Jasper and then we'll move to Huntingburg and then Ferdinand. And we, um, we got the feedback that the rotation really works with the participants. They enjoy doing that. So with that, um, we had a lot of different conversations and, uh, we really wanted to tie downtown square, um, and, and really, uh, focus the energy and bringing people to that square and see the renovations and bring visitors to that area. On, uh, Friday, September twentieth is the Kids Fun Run. And we are going to be, uh, making it more of a, a tailgate type of thing. There's a football game, um, a home game, football game going on. And so with that, we want to make a real nice festive area. And then on Saturday, the start and finish of the Heartland Half Marathon in 5K and Team Challenge is at the Courthouse Square area. So right in front of Downtown Fitness and Running. And so with that, um, we were talking within our committee. Um, a lot of participants that, uh, that do these types of runs, they enjoy having a beverage after a run. Um, that's been a conversation we've had with the Heartland Committee for years now, is it would be nice to have that type of offering. With the Dora in place, it allows us to have that offering except for the time. Um, so with that, the time of the race is seven thirty AM is when the Heartland Half Marathon and Team Challenge starts. Eight thirty AM is when the 5K begins. And so the, uh, the majority of runners are, uh, finishing between nine AM and ten AM. So, uh, we were hoping, uh, hopeful that we can move the start time of Dora for that specific day of Saturday, September twenty-first to, um, to be post-race. So beginning at nine AM, um, as long as we have, um, vendors that would like to be open that early. So we aren't, um, pushing people to, um, have that type of option, but we wanted to tell them where they can get, they can get a beverage while they, uh, are at the finish. So that is my request today.
The request is to modify the time.
Right.
Make an excep, make an exception for this one day. Um, September twenty-first, where the Dora normally starts, I think, noon, um, to have it start at nine o'clock AM.
That's correct.
With me, um, by the help of, uh, of, uh, you know, my, my, so I would be, so I would be
I do know your opinion, yes.
The rest of it is great.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And I think you saw my feedback when, when the question was asked on there. I've been a number of these as a, as a willful and, and supportive follower of my wife who runs these, not me, uh, unfortunately. And told you our experience with it. We saw, we've seen them, I've seen them all over the place where you come in and have, have a libation afterwards, uh, when you get done with a, with a run like that. So yet had no problem with it. I would go ahead and entertain a motion to adjust the Dora time to nine AM.
Yes.
On September the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, for one-day exception to, to bring that time, time forward three hours.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Paul and a second from Kevin for the discussion.
You know, I think establishing the Dora, we knew we'd probably have some exceptions and this is one. So.
Well, I think it's also when we talk to the, uh, restaurants that are down there, it's, it's promoting them. If we can get those runners to stay and go and they'll have dinner or lunch or whatever at the restaurants and, and, and most runners are athletes. So they might have a few beers, but not, they're not going to sit down there all day and, and cause problems. It, it just doesn't work that way. So this, this would be a great benefit to the, to the square and to our businesses down there.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. I have a motion for Paul, second from Kevin. All in favor, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I have two opposed, five ayes.
We're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, bud.
Next thing on the agenda is the Regional Wellness Center, the RFPQ. And here we need council approval to move forward with the purchase of the, or with the RFPQ to issue that, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Renee, you want to talk through this?
So, um, as as you all know, we adopted the BOT statute a month ago. And part of the process for, um, or, no, part of that process is to begin with, um, selection of a, it's, I'm calling it a developer, it's a team, whoever that team is. That would be the, um, general contractor and any other subcontractors that they identify on the front end who would work with Haffer, who is our selected design team, and go through the process of negotiating with the city. What the final, um, project looks like and what the guaranteed maximum price is. So in order to begin that selection process, we start with the advertisement of a request for proposals and qualifications. And, um, as we begin that process, then we would select a committee to review those, um, the responses that we get in. Um, sit down and interview candidates and, um, negotiate those terms. And, uh, that process would be expected to take approximately, oh, probably four to six months. So, um, in order to begin that, we need to get the council's approval of the RFPQ.
Do we know how many people will be on the committee? Do we have?
I would say probably five.
Five, okay.
So this this is kind of a process to nail down a price, isn't it?
Yep.
Yes.
So, you know, we have to have that so we kind of know where our funding is going to come and grants and, you know, whether it's affordable. So, you know, I guess it's a kind of a prior step for all that, so we have to have it.
And I suppose, Renee, that the no member of city council can be on that committee because one of the stipulations is proposing firms shall not contact any city council members.
Well, no, yeah, so they're not, the the point to that is that they can't, they need to negotiate with the committee, with the city through that committee, not reaching out to either the city council or, for example, if the redevelopment commission were involved, not not to those board members. So, um, communications would strictly stay between that committee and, um, go through that negotiation process.
So if a city council member were on the committee, that that would be fair game to, as as part of their their service on that committee, they could communicate.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And with these contractors, I guess there's no really cost to us. I guess our cost is, um, the Haffer discussions probably on the Haffer end maybe.
So, um, that will all depend on the terms that are included in their request responses. If, I mean, it's a long and somewhat costly process for those, um, contractors. And some of them do, um, include a charge, a fee in their proposal that they would charge to go through that process with the city. Not all, but there could be a charge associated with that process.
But we would know that upfront.
Right.
Yeah.
Think I'd kind of like to know who are the committed committee members, uh, earlier than than later.
Okay.
I'd like that.
In in conjunction with this, I think I had mentioned that I did, um, meet a gentleman, John Vassell. He's with a company called F.A. Wilhelm Construction out of Indianapolis. And his company does the bot projects fairly often. And he's willing to do like a Zoom call with some council members if you'd like to, um, just hear information from him on on from the construction part, how does that work? How do they determine their costs? How do they stick with their costs? And I told him I I'd throw it out there and maybe set up a meeting if anybody wants to tag on. You can just hear their part of it on how it works from the, not the city part, but the construction part of it.
And I think I think most of those companies would do the same thing. It's just a matter of, if you're going to make it available to all the council members at one time, then you've got to declare it as a public meeting.
Yeah, I I don't even think this company would probably bid on this project. I don't know, they might, they might not. It's not that we would be giving him a heads up. He would just be explaining the bot process from the construction end of it.
Yeah, and that's that's fine. I'll be happy to either help if that's something that you want me to sit up but or set up. But to the mayor's point, if the council as a group gets together in order to get information that would concern a project, then we have to advertise that as a public meeting.
And I think that would be fine because maybe even it would be a good way to kind of share how a bot works to the general public also. Because we've not done that before.
I had a conversation with one of our local design build contractors here in the county as well, who has worked on a couple of BOT projects already through a different contract, they subbed out or one of the subs. And he said it actually was was one of the ways that you can, I don't want to say necessarily control, but you can make sure that you're getting local builders involved as well, that it's not a a road crew coming out of another state or another part of the state to come in and do it.
So they like.
As long as the money's there.
They like doing it.
They they don't mind doing it at all. Yep.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the RFPQ process for the Regional Wellness Center.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Kevin and a second from John.
I have a follow up.
Further discussion.
Question on, uh, on the committee, how is the, how are the committee members chosen and determined? Does the council vote on them?
What I would say is that, um, we'll sit down internally staff, I'll sit down with the mayor and, um, likely Tom and a group of us that have been involved in the process so far and make a proposal or a suggestion, not of the names of the people, but from from where the people would come and then see whatever, how everybody feels about that. And and we can work on massage that to see until everybody's comfortable with it and then go from there.
I I would not care to be on that committee, but I would feel more comfortable if a councilman, councilperson would be on that committee. Just to provide the information back to us.
It's a good idea.
Or for that matter, too, just like the RDC.
We'll put your list together and we'll we'll move forward.
Is there something in this RFPQ process documentation that talks about that committee?
No, not not the makeup of the committee.
Um, another item in here talks about what the proposal should include. Um, so for example, I've I've lost it on the screen already, but it said somewhere there should include four, four gymnasiums, aquatic center, et cetera. Keep going back to this, I I, and now we're using language like phased approach. But that's different as it's described from what I was originally speaking of. Perhaps we might have to do a phased approach. For example, phase one might not include aquatic center, phase two might. Here, now we've identified what phase one and phase two is, but I I guess what I'm getting at is these proposals, can we require them to say, look, here's here's one plan that does not include aquatics. Here's one plan that does include aquatics.
I would not anticipate any of the respondents submitting anything that looks like a design for the building. I would expect them to go through and provide us information about their qualifications and how they, um, put together pricing and how they will come to a guaranteed maximum price. And as we go through the process of selecting that a developer and sit down at the table with them and Haffer and the Y, at some point, I think we talked about, hopefully by the end of August, we will be very close to knowing what we expect the guaranteed maximum price to be.
What we can afford to build.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then with that information in mind, we would go forward with the design together and build to that price.
So we think we'll have substantial numbers together in 90 days.
Uh, is that the end of it? Yeah. I mean, that's the goal, you know.
Sure, sure.
Other, any other points? Good, good, they're good, good to bring those up. Okay, at this point, I have a motion from Kevin and a second from John. All in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you.
We'll see. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2024 dash five. It's an ordinance establishing the fees for rental and associated costs Jasper Arts Center and fees for the participation Jasper Arts Center program.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to read for the second time on this, uh, the ordinance by title only.
Second and third reading, can we do both, Renee? No.
We have them seconded.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion from Paul to read by title only, a second from Chad. All in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read the ordinance 2024 dash five by title only?
Ordinance number 2024 dash five, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, establishing fees for rental and associated costs of the Jasper Arts Center and fees for the participation in Jasper Arts Center program.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second.
Have a second from Phil. Any further discussion? Is Kyle here?
Yeah.
Kyle, you want to come forward and maybe talk about the changes? I think that we were asked that the last time and I I think you sent a note out, I'm not sure, I don't remember it right offhand, but.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, we're in year four of operating the Cultural Center. Uh, and this is the first time that we've come asking to adjust the rates that we are currently using at the Cultural Center for uses out there. There are a handful of reasons for the request. We have a number of optional, um, features or amenities, uh, that are are basically, I don't want to use the term nickel and diming, but it's a lot of additional steps for folks. We're just trying to consolidate all that all into one. Well, some are amenities that just about every renter is taking advantage of, and so it just makes sense to just add it into the process. Another is an amenity that causes a lot of confusion and it's not so much worth the hassle. So just including it in there, uh, from a cost perspective is not adding much more to their rental. Um, and it's going to cause a lot less confusion in the process from getting them to a successful event. It also helps us keep up with rising maintenance costs, uh, operational costs. It helps us better manage the demand and usage of the space, ensuring that while it's also accessible and available for the different uses that are exclusionary, um, private events, if you will, uh, it also maintains an open calendar for the public, too, so that the public can come in and use the that amenity as well without renting it.
I think you did some comparisons, too, didn't you, with rates?
We did.
Thanks, God.
Yeah, and we're not, we're not the most expensive, uh, venue in the county. Uh, we're not the least expensive. Um, we are somewhere in that middle, uh, zone right now, um, based on the uniqueness of the space uh, and some of the other amenities that we offer that are a little bit different. Um, we feel like we're in a good spot. We're not the full white glove service that maybe some others provide, um, but we're also, um, a little bit more than what some other venues provide. So there's a good mix, I think, in the county for what people might be looking for.
I would just be curious over the next year if there's any, uh, anyone that said, no, we we can't have our our event here, it's too expensive.
Sure.
Keep track of that.
One hundred percent.
You don't have to, you know, keep a detailed track, just off the top of your head, if some people say that.
And I think we might see, um, it may even be the next year and a half or so because of how far out bookings come in.
Oh, the the current bookings are under the current rate.
Correct, yeah. And and we've taken the approach of anybody who has, um, signed an agreement, um, with us prior to these changes going to into effect, we'll continue to honor that rate when they sign the agreement. So anything after that date that it would go into effect on or after that date is when the new rate would take effect.
I'd just be curious, especially for the atrium, because that's probably the one that bumped up the most.
It is, yeah, one hundred percent. And 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 what I what I like to tell, um, our our board and our staff is, um, nothing has to be permanent. This isn't a lifelong change. So if we do this, make this change and we find that it has a a negative impact, um, nothing's stopping us from coming back. And I, it's another time I get to take out of your evening, I suppose, but, um, that seems like a a small price to pay for.
If we undercut too much, you're you're competing then with private businesses.
That's the other thing, too. And when we made the original, uh, original, uh, assessment of of the facility, venues in the area, which it even changed from the time we first set our price rental rates to, um, to when we opened, new venues popped up. We didn't want to leverage the support and investment the city could to undercut businesses because some, it is their business. Um, and we didn't want to overcharge either. So trying to strike that middle ground is is something we try to keep in mind.
Kyle, I'm curious, there's a, uh, there's the nonprofit and government rate. Uh, in in what instance, uh, does government, uh, like for, for example, the Christmas party that the city did? I think it was a a great thing for the employees at, uh, Christmas luncheon, I think is specifically what it was. Is that an instance where, is that a billable fee to the city in that instance or is it available for use in?
It's a, so we consider, uh, as a department of the city, any city sponsored event or activity like that, um, there's been some others. There's no fee. We still draft up an agreement so that rules, policies, everything is is set out. But, um, as the city owns that building and city's responsible for renting that space out, the city doesn't charge itself rent, um, in that capacity. That would, the government rate applies to, um, instances where like the Indiana Arts Commission or other state agencies would come in and use that space. But for City of Jasper events, we don't ask for a fee. We have an operational agreement with the library as well, um, that outlines that any event that they would have in the atrium space, for example, there's no fee for that as well. And that's part of an operation agreement we signed, uh, with them when the building was getting ready to open up.
Thank you for the explanation, Kyle.
Yep.
I think it helps quite a bit.
Yep.
Hey, Kyle, I just have a quick question. I think you had, um, mentioned that you wanted to make a change, a slight change to the language. Did that?
To the, uh, processing fee portion. I thought Liz told me this morning or some point today that she and Jane had communicated. I don't know if, no.
That change is not, there is no change
Okay.
in this ordinance.
Okay, okay.
If that was something that you needed.
Well, so, yes, um, so what Renee is referring to is is, uh, conversation around, um, our processing fee. And this is strictly for ticket sales for performances, uh, at the auditorium. And, um, the way it's written now, um, the processing fee would be waived for all, uh, we'll call them box office sales in person. Uh, so that someone comes up to the desk, buy a ticket, uh, in person, we waive the fee, no matter if it's the day of the show, um, during the day that morning, or if it's at the door, which would be the hour before the show starts, um, or if it's sometime months in advance. If they're in there in person, we're waiving the processing fee. The change that I I would request that we make is that we restrict that further to just door sales where we waive that fee. And that's strictly out of convenience, not because the cost is less. The processing fee is still the same regardless of if they buy it in person or over the phone or online. It's the same fee, it's the same cost. The, uh, waiving of that at the door is simply out of a a need to get people in the door faster and to simplify and streamline that process. So the request is just to further restrict that so that the 5% processing fee would be waived on door sales, not, uh, box office.
In here, it doesn't say anything about at the door, it just says phone, mail in or online orders only for purchase of tickets, 5% per ticket.
Correct.
So maybe it's just self explanatory.
Well, so someone could buy in person, so it only says that we'll charge 5% on in those instances, but it doesn't mention in person. So if someone comes.
He wants that that language, phone, mail in, online and in person except
Correct.
for on day of door sales.
Specifically door sales, yeah.
Why, why does that make the, how does that streamline what?
During the checkout process?
Yeah.
Um, the, if someone wants to pay with cash, we're not making change. It sounds simple, but when when and if there's a line of people at the door and you're trying to make change 5% of of a
It seems like we're doing the exact opposite. You're rewarding people for waiting until the last minute to get the tickets, whereas you're charging people who get them in advance an extra 5%. I mean, whatever, it's your, your.
Sure, um, I don't know, I guess we hadn't looked at it as a as a reward or a penalty. More so, this is, if if we would do anything, then I would charge it at the door as well and we just wouldn't waive it at all um, because the cost is still the same, um, regardless of how someone buys a ticket. of how someone buys a ticket, or in what form that they use to buy the ticket, there's still the same fee, um, that we're paying, um, in order to cover those costs.
Well, this, since there doesn't seem to be a big rush on passing this, why don't we just table this for the, the next reading and you bring back the wording that you want it to say, and then we don't have to pass another separate little line as like an addendum? I mean, is that all right, or is it okay the way it's written?
We can, we can come up with a language, it's just a dis- a decision, a business decision.
Hmm?
Do you want to waive the, um, handle, or the processing fee, whatever, for no one, or just for the people who get the tickets at the door? I mean, that's really the, the question.
If it can be handled, I would, I would let it across the board, I would. Because I understand what you're saying, Renee, if I, I go in and I buy my tickets or season tickets and I'm paying five percent, and then if somebody can come to the door and not, and buy for a single performance and they don't have to pay the five percent, I say just keep it the same.
So really you're saying, um, that for the purchase of all tickets, there would be a five percent ticket handling fee?
That's what I would recommend, but...
That's really not what Kyle wants, though.
Well, I'm fine, I mean, eh, again, we, we just, we ask for that to try to cover the cost of the, the service, the platform.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, we moved this, this year to a percentage-based, um, versus, it used to just be a flat dollar amount, uh, and, um, as the cost to provide that service has gone up, we, we went from two, it had been two dollars for years, this last season it was four dollars, but if someone buys a fifteen or twenty dollar ticket and then they pay four dollars, that's a huge percentage of their ticket price, um, and we thought a five, a percentage-based option would scale better. Um, we're still well below the industry average, um, you know, we're not doubling your ticket price, um, like some other platforms might, um, and we're, we're very grateful to be able to do that, but, um, I, I, I'm honestly, from a decision standpoint, if council would prefer to do it across the board and just simplify it that way, that's fine with me. I, I guess it's not really, because we also offer, um, rush tickets for students, and that's been a thing in place for years, um, and that's a heavily discounted ticket for students who buy a ticket to the show literally right before it starts, um, which would not, would be a disincentive for a student of any age, um, to buy a ticket ahead of time, but I think the idea is you want to get your ticket so you know you, you have your seat, um, to a show. Now granted, some of the shows in the past, eh, is probably a seat available, but I think as, um, this upcoming lineup comes out, uh, which we're very excited about in, in future seasons, I think with any luck, uh, and some strategic placement of shows, that'll be a, a hotter and hotter ticket, uh, so, uh, I'm happy either way. Like, I, I can't come away from this unhappy, if you will.
Well, really, if someone shows up at the door and you have no tickets, then you have no seat for them either.
Correct, correct.
Whether they're a student or whoever they are.
Correct, correct.
So, so as it is right now, the, the fee is go, as the language stands, the fee is going to s- be applied to all ticket sales, is that what...
Except for in-person purchases.
That's right.
Okay.
But if, if that's, if we take that exception out, then I would just rewrite the language to say five percent per ticket, period. It wouldn't have any exception.
This, which way you want to go?
Nah, so you're, if we're gonna, if we're gonna split that hair, then I would just say, uh, if the option isn't to just have it waived at the door sales, I would just apply it to all sales, as opposed to in-person.
Okay.
Yep.
And so, will we make that adjustment in this?
We can do it in the third reading, I think.
It was...
Well, we've, we're still in the second reading discussion.
We can do the change in the third reading, can we?
We can, yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion from Kevin and a second from Phil at this point. Other discussion? So at this point, we're approving it as it is?
Right.
Make the revision the next, okay?
Re- third reading.
Okay. There's no further discussion? All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, could I have a motion to read the ordinance in the third and final reading in full or by title only?
I'll make that motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Nancy to read by title only?
I'll second.
I have a second from Chad. All in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the city attorney please read ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash five by title only?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash five, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Jasper, Indiana, establishing fees for the rental and associated costs of the Jasper Arts Center and fees for the participation in Jasper Arts Center programs.
Okay, could I ask for a motion to approve the ordinance on the third and final reading?
I'll make that motion with the amendment.
Kevin's making the motion with the amendments discussed.
I'll second that.
Second from Phil. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so I will, it will say, section one point five seven point zero two five, handling fees, the city of Jasper shall charge those persons or entities purchasing tickets five percent per ticket for Jasper Community Arts Commission-sponsored ticketed performances. The rest of the language will be deleted.
That sounds good.
That says it all.
Just rolls right off the tongue.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, send by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Okay.
Okay, Billy.
Yeah, it's time.
Hey Bill, we ran out of time, you got to walk. I'm sure I can take it back. You're doing good, bud.
Thank you for your patience.
It's not at all. Nope.
That's why I PT to walk the steps. No weight, no weight restrictions, but I, uh, go as fast as I can. I was out of breath, but every day, just walking up.
Thank you.
This is day two, that's the idea. It's good stuff.
I did the same one from before.
It looks clever, it is slightly different.
Bill?
Thank you.
Jay?
Good evening, Bill Kaiser with Dettons, along with Danny Miller from Flaherty &amp; Collins. I'm excited to be standing here today to address you regarding this exciting project on, that Kremp Corporation and Flaherty &amp; Collins are looking at for the redevelopment of one-two-two-four Mill Street, which is the former Indiana Furniture, Indiana desk building. We wanted to go through a couple slides, um, if you can go to the first slide first, that, um, as part of the process, um, we first visited, um, the BZA to ask for several variances in order to put together the PUD district. Those variances are granted, then went to the planning commission with respect to the proposed, proposed redevelopment of this project, um, and that entails the reason we're here tonight, which is an ordinance which would establish a PUD, uh, for this approximate four-acre site, which is between Mill Street and Vine Street, Twelfth Street and Thirteenth Street. This is the, uh, former Indiana Furniture building, a couple of views we wanted to show you, just to make sure you're familiar with the building, with the site, you can turn again. Um, another view of the backside of the shipping area, the, of the former Indiana Furniture building, a view of the interior courtyard of that building, a view of a small parking lot located just north of Thirteenth Street, which previously served the office for Indiana Furniture, and then the replat. So, to bring you up to speed, part, one of the other things we did, um, this property was previously divided into halves, which was part of the subdivision dating back to eighteen ninety-five. Um, the Indiana Furniture building was built in approximately nineteen oh five, so it served as a manufacturing facility for over a hundred years. Um, it has certainly served its useful life. Um, Indiana Furniture has since moved to its facilities to one hundred South, um, and made this building available for redevelopment. As part of the redevelopment process, uh, we also replatted the property, um, so that, um, we, you now see this, these two, um, primary plat- primary sections that are into three lots. Lot one, which would be part of the initial redevelopment, which contains primarily the buildings which are located on the left-hand side or the west side of the lot. Um, lot two, which is a lot which would be located along Vine Street, and then lot three, which is a lot we've looked at for a potential, uh, a future development, and then lot four, which is the small parking lot north of Thirteenth Street, which is currently scheduled to continue to be maintained as a parking area which would serve the leasing office, which would be in the approximate area that Indiana Furniture's former, uh, office facilities were in the northwest corner of the, of the facility. So, in trying to get you, uh, at least oriented about what Flaherty &amp; Collins is looking at for the redevelopment of this project, we wanted to show you at least the current proposed, um, development of what we call phase one. And there, this is the ground floor, then a second floor, then a third floor, and then a fourth floor, um, all detailing about a hundred and fifty units as they've currently laid out, um, this facility for redevelopment. Um, they've submitted a lighting plan, a landscape plan, um, and we wanted to go back to the question, so even though we don't have any current renderings of what the facility, the existing facility looked like, you can see behind this facility, which was a rendering of what lot two might look like, um, looking, uh, you know, northwest, um, from Vine Street, um, how this could be additional, uh, new construction on lot two. This would be a second phase of the development after lot one was developed. Um, we wanted to give you an idea of kind of what this would look like, and then also if you can see what the courtyard would potentially look like behind that building as part of the landscaping and, and parking that would support, um, the phase one development.
Are, are those units included in the hundred and forty-seven?
No, those are not, yeah. So the, the hundred and fifty units are only the redevelopment of phase one, and, um, we go to Chad.
That idea there, if we're on Vine Street, that is actually new construction?
That would be new construction, yeah. That's the vacant, so if you, if you would go back, you would see that, oh, wait, I guess, I don't know if we can see the, back to the question, from a picture standpoint, let me go back a little further, maybe further. Yes, this is a, that's the, the east end of this property is all gravel parking lot, um, and it doesn't occur until, back to this, this brick, uh, this block building, which is on the north side, and then on the south side, an open area, so this is the end of that. So there is a large gravel parking area on the east end which would lend itself to redevelopment.
And that would show kind of right across the street from the vine, as it is current.
Yes, right.
Todd was here, he, he had some reservation initially and he came right around and he saw, it's everything kind of going the way it was.
I think Todd wanted some parking for his own facilities along the front side of this, all of which, I mean, this is certainly a perspective rendering...
Sure.
...of what the facility would be. It may make sense to put parking, you know, a, a long Vine Street in front of these buildings. You know, part of the idea was that, um, there could be commercial retail on the main floor and residential on the second floor. I think the idea or thought was that trying to be creative about, again, creating community in the a- area down here, since there's already, um, already substantial number of residential, uh, units, this would be a considerable, um, addition to those residential units, so we have more residential units. So you, if you look at that, you know, it's, it is open on that ground floor as potentially being, um, commercial, uh, uses, back question, so there, in our drawing, in some of the drawings we've shared with the city, we have parking just behind this building on lot two. Certainly it may make sense that maybe they want...
He was asking for some angled parking on the street.
He wanted, yeah, the vine, the vine doesn't have no parking.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, is there a plan for phase one, any of that to be demoed?
There are some, there, there will be some, Nancy, there will be some buildings that... Yeah, what, you can go back a little bit too, maybe, uh, we can show you real quickly, like right here, if you see, if you look to the, um, on the left-hand side where the courtyard is, Nancy, that, you know, so there is a courtyard and, you know, on this landscaping piece, parking area, back to the question, and then if you looked over to where lot two is, you know, maybe some angled parking a lot, we're trying to angle those buildings, the spaces on the north side of thir- if you look on Thirteenth Street, you know, there's are existing facilities that are all trying to be maintained, um, and then when you angle around the U to come to the south side, you can see where the buildings are maintained. So I guess if you go back one space more, you can look, sorry, let's go back to the, we go back to the inventories, you can see that these are the, the, the greatest attempt to utilize the existing structures, you know, for...
Really, it's almost, um, parking taking up more space than the buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
When you look at the whole picture.
Well, in, in thinking about density too, we've had the conversations, you know, anticipation to meet with, you know, with, with the city, and that, that's been a very fruitful conversation back and forth to try to make certain that we are maximizing the availability use of this, of this property and the buildings that are there, so it's been a very co- I'll say Nancy, it's been a very cooperative process where the city has said to us, we want this project to be successful, we want to support the project, let's make certain that we are having enough parking, but we're not having over parking, that we, we really want, you know, residential units, so, uh, and trying to work out the question, and, um, Flaherty &amp; Collins will, as you'll understand and see from, uh, Danny's presentation, has a lot of experience in trying to redevelop these older facilities, and so they've looked, they're very excited about this building and try to maximize the number of units, um, out of the Indiana Furniture facility, so...
And I did zoom in on the plant commission and the BZA, so I'm...
So, okay.
We spent a lot of time on, on this last couple of months and...
Yeah.
Really excited about it.
And so, just to go through the timeline, just so you know that this, this is a process, um, here we are on May twenty-second, after having been, you know, in front of the BZA, in front of the planning commission, seeking your approval for the rezoning of this project and the establishment of this PUD. In July, Flaherty &amp; Collins will submit its ha- housing tax credit. This is workforce housing, so that, um, this is a long process, so those, we're expecting those tax credits to get awarded in November. Um, then we have additional work, reengineering, all, all the details that come out, um, in order to get to a, a May twenty-five award of a contract to Kremp in order to construct the facility, then we complete our financing, you know, right along the same time, and then the expectation is, you know, June of next year, construction starts, takes about a year and a half, then we get to January twenty-seven, you know, where we, uh, complete construction and then start leasing the facilities up, so in April twenty-seven, you know, that we have stabilization and hopefully are fully leased up. So that, it is a process, just so that this group knows and understands that, um, we, we stand here today, you know, um, asking to rezone this property in order to make certain that we can go make these tax, uh, credit filings with the state of Indiana. So, you know, the property right now is I two, you can't build apartments in I two, and so the idea is that we have to have the, the, uh, property properly, property, properly rezoned for residential. Um, and in doing so, we wanted to make a plan for the whole redevelopment of the facility, not just to come in and ask for a zoning change, but really work down and think through the ideas of how this property would be, the entire property would be, um, rezoned, and the, and again, the city has been a great partner in thinking about the whole area along Vine Street, and particularly this facility, and Flaherty &amp; Collins has certainly brought its expertise to that too, so, um, what we, I'd like to do now is allow Danny Miller to talk a little bit about, um, her projects and the projects that Flaherty &amp; Collins have done, and their other historic rehabs in Indiana.
Well, Danny's getting ready. Two questions that we had for them that stuck out in my mind, was having management on-site, somebody that is employed by Flaherty &amp; Collins on the property, so helping to take care of some of the workforce housing issues that we've had come up in the past, uh, and there were work, and you guys said you had fourteen thousand four hundred units under management at this point?
Yes.
I think that's pretty close, pretty accurate?
Yep.
So...
How many properties is that?
Um, I want to say it's about, actually, I have that number right here, I want to say it's about... Well, we've managed three hundred and fifty-one properties since nineteen ninety-three, uh, right now, our current portfolio is ninety-four properties, and, yeah, about fourteen, over fourteen thousand units, all across the Midwest.
There's a lot in each property then.
Yes, yeah, a lot of our, um, a big portion of our company, we do workforce housing and affordable housing, we also do luxury market rate, housing, towers, et cetera, most of those properties have two hundred plus units, so, we have a pretty wide portfolio across the Midwest. All right, so, um, historic rehabs, we love them, we've done a lot of them, um, so I'm just going to walk through a couple, like Bill mentioned, we don't quite, we don't quite have a rendering of the Indiana Furniture building as of yet, uh, we are working with our architect, they are, they just finished the laser scanning, um, to understand really what's in the building, the square footage, and how we can most efficiently lay it out. Um, so in the meantime, while we wait on some of those, uh, concepts, we'll show you our, um, our capacity to do historic rehabs, um, and there's nothing better than a before and after photo, uh, so I'm just going to run through a couple. This is in Kokomo, Indiana, uh, this is a, just, it was a burnout historic building in the downtown, right on the riverfront, um, the... in the downtown, right on the riverfront, the Northern Indiana Supply Company building. And it was a problem for the community. So we came in and preserved the facade and then added new construction to it. This is over 200 units of luxury housing in the downtown area. There's also retail on the first floor, and it's right along the riverfront. So it's made kind of a nice Riverwalk area. So that's just a great, great example of preserving the facade and turning it into a community benefit. Next, next is St. Mary of the Woods, Indiana. So this is on the college campus. The Sisters of Providence did not, no longer had use for this novitiate building, and they desperately needed affordable senior housing. And so we worked with them, we actually partnered with them as co-developers to rehab this into 68 units of affordable senior housing. There's actually a couple of market rate units in this building as well, if you go to the next slide, Bill. And it looks beautiful, able to preserve, you know, some of the historic elements of the building while turning it into high-quality housing. Next, this is one of my favorites. This is in Terre Haute. This is the Miller Parrot baking facility. This was used for a long time to bake saltine crackers. And then it served as the lighthouse mission for several years before suffering a very bad fire that burned off half the back of the building. This is right as you drive into downtown Terre Haute. So it was certainly an ISO certified historic structure. So next, we were able to turn it into 54 units of affordable senior housing. Looks incredible. And again, as part of the historic rehabs and getting the historic tax credits, you have to preserve a lot of the historic elements and integrity of the buildings. So you can see one of those big doors in the hallway we kept. We actually, a couple of the units have the old saltine ovens in their walls still. So again, unique, unique units, just like the Indiana Furniture Building will be. Every unit will be different. A lot of the historic elements will be preserved as part of the redevelopment. All right, next, this is another good one, Martinsville, Indiana. Three buildings near the downtown, ISOs. This was an old sanitarium, as well as the sheriff's jail and offices. Again, sat vacant for a very long time, historic buildings. And they were, they were a problem. So we came in and rehabbed them, turned it into about 40 units of housing over three buildings.
In that case, like in Martinsville, who bought that building then and then hired you? Or did your company buy that?
Well, as part of the redevelopment, we would have purchased it, or a tax credit limited partnership owns it. We've most likely bought it from the city of Martinsville, but I'm not sure on that. We are public-private partners, so typically, we are partnering with municipalities to help, you know, fix problems in their downtowns. I can't quite remember who the owner of these was when we purchased them, but I wouldn't be surprised if it was the city of Martinsville. And then the sheriff's jail is really cool. It still has, you know, some of the old jail bars and some of the offices even still have, like, the names, Sheriff's Office, et cetera, on there. And then you can see just some of the historic, the historic wood. Again, that's inside of a unit. So every unit is different and has those historic elements. Oh, and then this is another good one, they're all good. Crawfordsville, Indiana. This was an old hospital, sat vacant for very, very long, obviously very creepy, not good for the property values in the single-family homes nearby. And so we came in and, again, made it beautiful, turned it into, I think, 42 units of housing, or 50 units of affordable housing for seniors here. So, yeah, that's just a couple of examples of what we do. We're really good at it. We're multifamily experts. And we've probably done, I want to say we have at least, at least 10 historic rehabs in our portfolio, it's probably more than that. And we're excited to add the Indiana Furniture to that portfolio. I'm happy to answer any questions about the project, scope of work, et cetera.
Flaherty, Collins located, where are you located?
Headquartered in Indianapolis.
And have you worked with CREP before?
Yes, actually, I have. So I met Ted and Matt at, we own a property, Flaherty and Collins owns a property down in Tel City, Indiana. It's called River Point Apartments. And when that was built in 2014, it was built with a bunch of retail on the first floor. And we were only able to fill half of that retail over time. So about 5,000 square feet of that retail sat vacant facing the river. And so I converted that into six more units. And we needed a local contractor to do that, and we, CREP won the bid from us. And we, that project went great. I think CREP would tell you the same thing, so we established our relationship that way. And then after that project was done.
It looks nice, yeah.
Oh, good, thank you. And after that project was done, Ted and Matt said, you guys should come check out this building we're looking at buying in Jasper. And I said, say less. So here we are. So, yeah, we're excited to work with CREP again. Obviously, this is a little bit of a bigger project, but really excited. And it's always great to use a local company, so.
So I understand CREP is buying the building initially?
CREP owns the building now.
They bought it.
Yes, and we will be purchasing it from them.
Okay, after the construction has been completed, probably?
No, when we close on the financing is when the acquisition will happen. And then the building will go into a limited partnership, and then we'll construct it.
So you eventually, I mean, you don't accumulate a lot of these product properties. You'll eventually sell them off, or do you, your intention is to keep them?
We are long-term owners.
Okay.
Yep, especially with the workforce affordable housing portfolio. We commit to at least 40 years of affordability on these, and we really don't sell our properties. And we self-manage everything.
Beautifully done, you look great.
Thank you.
Ready for motion.
I have a question. You have a list here of the adjoining property owners, so they obviously were notified that the meetings, the Plan Commission, BCA. Anybody, I can't remember, it seems like a few people were in the audience at one of those meetings, but anybody throw up any red flags? Or were they, like, cheering?
No, we've had nothing but positive notes. I think we had some comments about parking, but it was still positive.
We had one positive that went negative and back to positive. One concern was that the height was going to impede his view of the St. Joseph Church Tower if we build on Lot Two. And we got past that pretty quick, so.
Yeah.
Great church.
Yeah, it's been nice to have a lot of positive support on this.
And at this, at this point, we're estimating the investment here to be around $43 million.
That's correct.
For this project. So it's quite a substantial project.
And this was a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission to come to the council, so you guys are all aware.
And really, all of your pictures are in this packet. They're just not in color, but they're easily, you can tell what it looks like.
And we've got several more on our website, if you want to check them out.
Okay.
So I have ordinance 2024-6 before you. Could I have a motion to read the ordinance on first reading in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
John?
I'll second that.
It's one of our lines.
Yeah, we might be here till next week, if you're ready.
Renee just quit.
All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with the city attorney, please read the ordinance 2024-6.
Ordinance number 2024-6, an ordinance establishing Indiana Desk Planned Unit Development District.
Make a motion to read by title.
Motion to approve from Paul and a second from Kevin. Any further discussion?
Now, in the agenda here, it says available for first reading. So will we have second and third readings at the next meeting?
I will say, I actually have the ordinance as we printed. I changed the title to be more consistent with what we normally use. So the title was actually, "An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, Changing the Zone Map and Establishing Indiana Desk Planned Unit Development District."
And just to check on my motion, this is not available for one reading only, correct? We have to do three.
Correct.
Okay, so I have a motion from Paul, a second from Kevin. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Awesome.
Thank you.
It's great stuff.
We're excited to be a partner in Jasper, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinance 2024-7.
Thank you.
It's an ordinance appropriating additional money for the remainder of the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Make a motion for, to be read by title and for one reading.
Only one more.
Do I have a motion from Paul for, to read by title and for one reading only?
Whichever one you want to do first.
I'll second that.
Okay, one reading only at this point in time. So I have a motion from Paul and a second from Vince. All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Could I have a motion to have the ordinance read in full or by title only?
I'm able to read it by title only.
I have a motion from Chad.
I'll second.
I have a second from Vince. All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with the city attorney, please read ordinance number 2024-7 by title only.
Ordinance number 2024-7, an ordinance appropriating additional money for the city of Jasper, Indiana, for the remainder of the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024.
Could I have a motion to pass and adopt?
We need a public hearing.
I'm sorry?
We need a public hearing.
Oh, we do.
I can.
Okay. At this point in time, I would open, open it up for any comments from the public. Anyone from the public want to make a statement?
Seeing no one from the public wanting to make a comment, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a motion from Paul to close the public hearing? And a second from Kevin. All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, may I ask for a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number 2024-7?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
I'll second.
And a second from Phil. Further discussion?
I can just explain what they are really quickly. The first one, for $75,930, is appropriating funds from the Cumecap Development Fund to pay for a change order for the Dewey Street reconstruction project. The next one is appropriating the riverboat funds to contractual services in the sum of $100,000. A couple of meetings ago, you guys had approved to make a payment to the Community Foundation's endowment, and we needed an appropriation in place to do that, so that's for that. And then also, the last one is appropriating funds into, $70,000 into the RDA project fund. We received $70,000 at the closing of the pool bonds for the transfer of the property, and that was to go into this RDA project fund. And then we immediately turned around and paid Tabor Owens on their first pay out that money, but we didn't have an appropriation in place as well because we had never had that fund before, so.
Any other discussion, questions? If not, all in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we all sign that one, correct?
Yes.
Okay, next is ordinance number 2024-5. This, or, excuse me, Resolution 2024-5. And could I have a motion to have the resolution read in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
I have a motion from Vince to read by title only.
I'll second.
Second from Chad. The city attorney, please, excuse me, all in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The city attorney, please read Resolution 2024-5 by title only.
Resolution number 2024-5, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, to acquire property from the Greater Jasper Consolidated School Corporation.
Okay, could I have a motion to pass and adopt Resolution 2024-5? I have a motion from Paul.
Second.
And a second from Nancy. Further discussion?
So this is an, similar, nearly identical resolution to that which was passed by the school board, wherein they approved the transfer of the property or sale of the property to the city. And now the city will approve accepting the property under the terms of the sales purchase agreement. And it is the proposed site for the Regional Wellness Center.
Tenagers.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion from Paul, a second from Nancy. All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great, thank you.
And I think that's all for this evening.
Mayor, I did have one other thing, kind of to follow up from April, when we had the companies here with the tax abatements. And we felt like that maybe we were not exactly handling that correctly. So just to make sure that if the paperwork reads that they should appear in person, that they need to be appearing in person. I think that was mostly the thing that we learned from that. And I think, Chad, you had a few questions on it, Renee answered a few questions.
Yeah, the ordinance, ordinance actually says they must appear first. So I, yeah, I agree. We ought to follow the ordinance.
Just to make sure that we follow that into the future. It's not really fair to the ones who show up compared to the ones that don't.
I can let them know when I, I send out a reminder letter every year, and I'll change the wording in the letter to make sure that they understand that someone has to.
They must, sure.
Must, then paperwork complete.
Paperwork complete. I just wanted to bring that up as kind of a follow-up from last month.
One other quick question here, note, I know we've talked about this a couple of times, but one of our public address services, or getting word and comment out again, we had a water main break in my neighborhood this week. Had no idea, until we got up to make breakfast in the morning and had yellow water coming out of the, out of the sink closets at the corner of Eighth and Vine, and on 15th and, or 14th, yeah, 15th and Leopold Streets. Again, have we done anything, have we got anywhere with any kind of a public announcement?
The communication system.
Communication system.
Reach alert.
I'm still following up with that, because I talked to a gentleman the other day from Code Red. It's a whole nother company. And so when I think what I'll move forward with, if it's okay, is kind of just doing a little bit of research on several companies. Some that the students had also done some research on. And then the other group of students with cybersecurity, they had set up that rubric. So when we look at companies to kind of check off the list, whether they're checking off all of the boxes that need to be checked off. So I will continue to follow up on that, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that, but, yeah, and there's more and more things, I think, that happened that I see posted on Facebook, whatever. It's like, if we just had that communication system, it would just be simpler.
And again, we all know there's lots of issues around the communication systems, the administration of the system. Somebody's got to be responsible for it, and depending upon what you're going to put through, that's one of the bigger issues that we have internally. How would we administer something like that? And then the enrollment in communities that have this, it's a small percentage of the number of residents that actually enroll in it. So you're missing a larger portion of the population. Any one system, any one media you use, you're not getting everybody. So that's, that's really a struggle for, do we move forward or do we not? And it's going to, it's going to take someone to be responsible 24/7, 365 days a year. And I'm not against a system like that, but I think there's also some requirements, if we go that way, that we have to meet.
We didn't have an answer until, I had to wait until 7:30 to call to get ahold of somebody at Water to say, why is my water yellow or brown? Is this safe to drink, since we, several of us had glasses of it already and brushed teeth with it? It's bad we didn't have a boil water.
And really, with the training, every department could have an admin for that. It wouldn't just be one person or one, like, the police department, for example, wouldn't be the admin. Every department could be an admin, depending on the kind of notification that's going out. So that's just more of the research that I'll continue to move forward with.
I think we've still got to look into it. I agree, but just saying it's not, we have to decide.
It's not the total answer. It's just one more way of communicating.
Another angle on communications in general. I know that the talk is out there in barber shops, which means that it's being talked about everywhere. Some people think the public safety tax has been passed already. And we obviously know that that's not true. There's also other discussion about where we're at with the Regional Wellness Center. Lots of misinformed understandings, I think. So I look forward to what I hope is, I mean, public hearings are one thing, but you get, which you get here is a small crowd, but public forums, perhaps, the selling process of any project. I look forward to that, getting, getting everybody on the same page. Those who don't know what they don't know, need to know it. Look forward to the public part of the fundraising efforts.
Well, at this point in time, the public portion of the fundraising is, we've, we've just exceeded 12.1 million, which is, I'm really, private fundraising, excuse me, which I, I think is pretty exceptional at this point in time. And we'll be going into the public portion of that in July, so we'll be, be asking for more involvement from that standpoint. We, we don't know anything about the ready funds at this point.
Right.
We won't know that probably for at least another month. But then all the other elements of it, you know, it's same financial stack we've had before. That's, that's kind of where we're at. I don't know if, and it's dynamic, it keeps changing as we go.
Mayor, when would the ready funds be announced?
The end of June, maybe?
Supposed to be June, yeah.
Maybe. I'm going to say maybe because it keeps getting delayed depending on rollout, how people are trained on it. I'm, I'm optimistic, but cautiously optimistic. And if, if we don't get ready funds, then we've got to look at the project itself and scale it to what we can afford. And that's, I think that's what we've promised to build is something we can afford, so.
Mayor, I actually almost forgot. Legal Department again this summer, thanks to the Common Council, had the funds to hire a legal intern, and she's here with us this evening. So I'd like for Kalen Sublain to come up and introduce herself and tell you a little bit about herself.
Hi, my name's Kalen Sublain. I've met quite a few of you already, but I am a native from Jasper. I graduated from Jasper High School in 2019, and I attended Belmont University in Nashville. And then from there, I am now a law student at Liberty University in Virginia, and so I wanted to come home, and eventually I would like to come home for good. So I'm very grateful that I had the opportunity to intern with our city attorney, so I just want to say thank you for having me.
Awesome. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Welcome. Next. These are great opportunities for these interns to, to, to learn and, and have the opportunities to work on something significant within the community.
And they benefit our own departments. So with that, I would like to welcome the Planning Department's intern, Kevin Dominguez, and let him introduce himself.
Good evening, everyone. Please forgive me for my improper attire. I was not expecting to. I'm also a Jasper native, and I absolutely adore this city with all my heart. Like, it is such a benefit to be able to serve and help you guys out in what you guys do. I think it's amazing. And being able to learn and take a good grasp on how a policy process is, especially with the ordinances and all that, I feel like it's going to be a very beneficial skill to have, especially if I'm trying to become a lawyer, just like the other intern is. So I feel like it's going to be a very beneficial experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Okay, yes. Chad, I only answered part of your question. The other one was the safety tax.
Yep.
And at this point in time, you know, we had asked IU Center for Rural Engagement to sponsor a, an analysis of what that safety tax proposal might look at, because we were all getting some feedback about can we afford this, can we afford that? And I, I thought we'd get a third party to come in, take an independent look at it. They, they worked with the Kelly School and the MBA program and, and had two students assigned to us for, I think it was a six-week period, might have been five weeks, and they presented last, last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, last week, what their analysis of the public safety tax impact might be. And so with that, there were, you know, there's no decisions or anything. It was just a matter of, you know, we need to continue as a county to look at this because it's not, it's not just the city of Jasper. This is all the smaller communities in the area that are involved in it and are probably struggling worse than we are in, in having the right kind of equipment to be able to fight fires or, or provide law enforcement within the community. So there, there needs to be some follow-up at a county level and with the municipalities, municipalities' involvement. So at this point in time, there's no decisions or anything. It's just an analysis has been done and, and it's information that we need to weigh on.
The presentation they made was very informative, and Lisa had, had passed, distributed that around, so very helpful.
Any other point was 79 out of 92 counties have a public safety tax in place now. It doesn't mean we have to have one, but 79 of 92 counties have it in place.
I'd be curious to know about the counties that don't, how they, how they're doing and how they did it, if they're doing well.
It's a good question.
We can get the names of the counties, I think, so.
Well, and what percentage do those 79, what percentage tax did they pass?
Yeah.
Yep. So that's all data that should be available and, and is agreed with it. So further consideration on that, it's a matter of, you know, who's going to take the ball and run with it? You know, it's, I don't know that it's our responsibility necessarily. I'm not, but I think we should be involved in the discussion. And, and so with that, I'll, I'll leave it. We'll see what the next steps are. Okay? If there's no further questions or topics, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Kevin.
To hold, take it?
A second from John. All in favor, send anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
There we go.